I have no idea. I'm assuming he was working, might be on his way.
Okay.
Your guess is as good as mine.
Okay.
Alright, it's time to order. Start with our consent agenda. We have the accounts payable questions? I have one. Josh Butcher down here for...oh, there he is. Sixteen hundred dollars.
Well, he had all of these prices for as many times as he's cut that grass. And then he had a total of four hundred, but it didn't add up to four hundred. But he's been cutting both of them for a while. And it was gonna charge like three hundred dollars the first time. To cut both of them because they were so long.
So I guess my question is, who authorized him to do that?
It was in the minutes.
We discussed it and we said we were gonna talk to him, but we didn't have a vote on it.
Oh, well, when they said get somebody over there to cut it, and I said, "I'll call Josh."
We can't, we can't have anybody, we can't...
I thought I told you that, I told you that he was gonna cut it.
You said you were gonna talk to him, which means bring information back to the council to vote on.
Well, he's always done it before, I guess, so...
Well, see, we can't have...
If you don't want to pay him, I'll talk to him.
We can't have people, we can't solicit services without the council having to vote. I was accused of that last month.
So I thought I told you, but when they said to get ahold of somebody to cut that grass, I thought that was their direction to get ahold of him.
Who gave you that direction?
The council.
I think it was just general...
The consensus that having to get the grass moved because that's an ordinance.
There wasn't a vote, though.
Okay, let's make the motion and vote on it. We can't at the moment, but we can put it on the agenda.
And one of them, he won't be cutting anymore because they've contacted me.
Then we get that money back because we put the lien in the house.
Yeah, there'll be a lien put on my boat.
There will be?
Yeah.
On both those.
So it's not money that we're out?
It'll be out if I...
Well, we're out until they sell the house, which may be net worth.
No, we're out until their taxes are paid.
Taxes come right in. Once the ordinance is due, we get all that back.
But it's just kind of a point of order. I mean, if we're going to stipulate that, then we need to stand by that across the board.
That's fine.
Okay? I am okay with paying him because I know he's a good young man, I know he does good work. That isn't the issue, it's the protocol.
Well, I must've took it wrong. I guess nobody made a motion, they just said, "Get it done."
I can understand the confusion on that.
And in the past, it's been handled that way. Give the direction, get it done, because it's billed back to them on their lien, so...
And that's in general operating. It's no different than all these right here.
But from now on, we'll just get a motion and put it in there.
Easy enough.
And that sixteen hundred dollars was over, this is over time, this isn't like...
Right.
That's a hell of a yard.
And well, and apparently...
And that's both properties.
We're on the wrong business, I guess.
Plus, he charged three hundred dollars the first time for both because it was so bad.
Yeah, that was a jungle over there.
I imagine he probably had to cut it three times just to get it to look decent.
Intermittent.
Yeah. Oh, no, I mean, like I said, I have no problem with that. I know he does give his qualities a... Any question with the minutes?
Well, I have a question on the bill. Why did we pay John's phone PIN twice? Is John at all's phone reimbursed fifty dollars twice?
We didn't. I probably just honored his price. Because we have to enter it on the old one now. It's not like it used to be where that broke them. A new system isn't up yet, so I have to go in and enter them. So just delete that second one.
Yeah, okay, I was not, I was not paid twice.
From the month ending in six thirty on the sheet. Not that, that. This is, you're right on this. Okay, but you've added instead of subtracting. You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
Because we started out, our beginning balance, we lost money, but our ending balance is greater than our beginning balance.
Saying she added the expense and subtracted the revenue? Well, that's what I had assumed, but that does not, that does not come out of the force of...
Added this, this.
Comes out to this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because this is a loss.
The four thousand should have been subtracted from the beginning balance ending was added to the beginning balance. I wish things worked that way at my house, but it doesn't too.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
Meeting minutes. Other than the fact that this is like a transcript of the meeting, not meeting minutes.
They were pretty long.
What did we pay to publish these meeting minutes?
I don't know. It'll be really expensive. So on the minutes, I've checked again about posting and publishing, and everybody has a different answer. In this code, the people who are doing the code book, they know the code. So they say right here on the subject page, if you are under two hundred population, or if you do not have a newspaper in your city, you do not have to publish, you post, okay? That's why I believe the ordinance was done, so by ordinance, we could post and not have to publish. The auditor's gonna always put it in the audit report because they go according to what the big cities do.
Understood.
Milo, they said it's always in their audit report. They never publish their minutes because it's too expensive. They put it in the paper, they put it in, post it, and they put it on the website. So I think we should just go back to posting because it's gonna cost a fortune to publish minutes. And that's what she's saying right here.
I'm fine with posting it.
But it will be in the audit.
But if this says we need to post in three public places, so we're gonna have one...
We do. One, two, three, the bank. Those are our three places.
And those are in the, we have an ordinance, those are the three places we will post.
That's how it's been since I've been here, so I don't know if there was an ordinance at one time, but that's what I was told when I was trained.
It's just, as you refer to this, designated, designated by ordinance.
And so when we redo the ordinance book, these are some things I think that they want us to put in the new book. So when we have this done, we should have an ordinance done stating. We have the ordinance for posting. I think it is an ordinance, now that I think about it.
The locations are?
Yeah. To post the minutes and what the, where the three public places are. So we have that, and she has that ordinance.
How long before the, before...
Well, you guys have to meet and go through all this and decide what you wanna do and what you don't wanna do. And then they'll incorporate whatever your decisions are and then the book will get done. So you guys really probably have to need a workshop.
The only issue with that is, according to that section, we're not under two hundred people.
No, it's either under two hundred people or you do not have a newspaper in your city.
In the case of ordinance and amendments to be published in a city which has no newspaper published, a publication may be made by posting in three public places.
I missed the "or," I'm sorry.
And that's why the lawyer...
The end of the part right there?
I think that's what the lawyer said, let's just do the ordinance, to post. So it's gonna always be in the audit report. Milo said theirs is in their report every year, so, and they said we just, because we have an ordinance.
Just take that there?
We have an ordinance. So as long as they're posted...
And the information's getting out, I'm cool. As long as the information's getting out.
Because I think we should just...
No one in Indian only gives a crap of what we're doing over here.
Well, and a lot of people don't get the newspapers, so they don't read them anyway. So I think, I would better, rather have a motion that since we have an ordinance to post, due to the cost and what they're saying here, we will just post. And this is the code of Iowa code, so I think we should just keep posting them and put them on the website.
If that's the code of Iowa, then we'll leave it for me, I mean, yeah, that's it. There's no worry about it.
Yep. So if that's okay with you, I'm just gonna put in the minutes that we talked about it and...
I don't really think we need to get into the "he said, he said, he said."
No, I'll just say the council agreed to keep...
Well, I think those can even be more...
These minutes are outrageous, absolutely outrageous. Meeting minutes are supposed to be the motions that were made, whether they were seconded, and what the vote was. That's it. There's none of this, "he said this, he said this, she said this, he said..." None of that is supposed to be in these meeting minutes whatsoever. The, um, the whole thing about the DOT and the letter, that shouldn't, that has no way, shape, or form, that should not be in these minutes. If you want that included with the minutes, you can attach it to the minutes. But that should not be read out in these minutes verbatim.
What are you talking about?
When it says, "The ditch update from Mitchell Dillavue from the Iowa DOT." It's on the second page, middle of the page.
People in this town read these minutes so they know what's going on.
People in this town, if they want that much detail, need to come to this meeting.
We have to tell people what's going on. It is incumbent upon us.
I understand that.
C-span or whatever.
Have you, have you looked at what is required for meeting minutes and what meeting minutes are supposed to be?
Yes, I have.
Because this is not it. This is way, way over the top as far as meeting minutes.
We need the detail.
Robert's rules? To start with?
Well, would you please give me an example and show me?
Sure.
Obviously not now.
There's plenty of places out there to look that up.
I've looked it up too, and...
It's no different than the school board.
Any attorney is going to tell you this is way too much.
It doesn't go into this.
Most attorneys say that when you get this detailed in the minutes, you open yourself up to liability.
Why would you, by giving information, you open yourself up to liability?
Yes. Because, okay, you have to understand this from an attorney's standpoint too. But their standpoint is that when you put this much detail in minutes, if a comment is made that everybody forgets about later on, well, now, five years, ten years down the road, that can come back to bite you because it's in writing in those minutes. Shouldn't be in the minutes.
I can understand that.
Then maybe the comment should have never been made. I mean, I, I'm, I don't get that at all. If you can't stand behind your words, it shouldn't be said. And I want the people to know what's going on, give them some detail.
Fine. At the same time, I understand that they should come to the meeting if they're, if they're wanting to know that much. I get it. I understand. And that's the same thing, like, you gotta be careful about our emails. Why, what we're emailing back out to people, it's in writing. You have to be very, very careful. If you're talking to them on the phone, what can they do unless they're voice recording you? Which would be weird.
Well, I just put the hell I've always done minutes. I try to always put down what is discussed, basically.
Don't get me wrong, I missed, I missed it. I missed the last meeting. This was fantastic for me.
If I understand what Nathan is saying correctly.
Right here. That's what you need.
He's saying, he's saying that...
You talk about the basic discussion.
You present who made the motion, who seconded the motion, and the vote on that motion.
Right.
Yep.
And...
And nothing else.
That's right.
None of the preliminary discussion.
On the top of the second page is what is, that's two pages. On the top of the second page is what is not supposed to be in the minutes. And that's all the discussion part. None of that needs to be in there at all.
That doesn't all need to be in there, but what, what they discuss should be in there. I guess that's how I...
Briefly, it's your topic of discussion.
Briefly is fine.
And you just put topic of discussion.
But when you start getting into a really long conversation, I was never taught that way. I was just taught...
No.
To put down what they're discussing. If there's an objection to a vote, yes, you need to put that in more detail. But you don't need to say, "Well, so-and-so said this, and this one didn't agree with that, and that one didn't." It just basically is the motion. Who, does the motion override what everybody's saying? And what were they discussing? That's it. And that's how I was taught to do them a long time ago.
And so then if there's question, the people can read that general thing and then they can talk about the question.
Okay, and well, but I, here's the deal. I have read yours, and there's not enough detail to know what the heck's going on, even for us who are there. You can't go back and figure out what we discussed before.
If you know what motions were made and what motions were voted on and whether they passed or not, that's all that's supposed to be in the minutes. That's it. That's it. Who was in attendance, when the meeting was held, that's meeting minutes. That's it. There's no more than that.
I mean, I'll detail those four minutes.
Not great.
They're...
Same thing as our...
I mean, they're same thing. It's so... I've looked at minutes for Waterloo and Norwalk and several others that are all published, and none of them are in this kind of detail. They're pretty close to what Donna normally would do as far as discussion, a few comments or whatever if need be, but that's, these are over the top.
I can do it however you want to do it. It's just, what's first, like we publish and those are gonna cost a lot.
That's, these are, yeah, we're paying by, by column inch, and this is really expensive.
But we're going to post now anyways. I'm sorry, there needs to be some way to get the information to the people. Not everybody can or will show up here, but they do want to know.
Sorry.
Call their councilman and find out.
Yep.
I, I hear ya. And I actually really, as I missed the meeting last month, this was amazing. It was like I was there. It was a story. It was fantastic. But yeah, I, I hear ya. I'm, I would be more concerned. What hit home with me was the liability of what could come back to bite somebody. And that could really happen. That we discussed that with the email. We all agree that emails, before you answer, we all have to have a discussion or all have to make sure that the facts are right before you put anything in writing. I think it's kind of a similar thing, that minutes should match other minutes of other towns. And if they can't be here, fill them in the best you can.
Speaking of emails, who's getting the emails right now?
I got one.
From?
I got one. It was asking about, uh... The, whether we needed to have the alarms next door trip, the fire department.
Oh, that guy called me.
Yes.
Okay, so I've been getting a couple emails from the website. And there's always just you copied, so I wasn't understanding what everybody, everybody would be told.
Yeah, I think he's gonna give the, some of those email addresses that you got to them.
I gave that to you and you said you were gonna do it.
I think I took a picture of it. I haven't spooked it yet.
Because I called them today and they said that the city account and you were the only ones on there. That are getting, that are getting any, any emails or anything.
So can you send that to me by following that picture and I will send that to them tomorrow when I'm at work?
I'm gonna edit my address for you as well, but we can do that after the meeting.
Okay, so if you don't want the address that we have, you go to let me know what address to put in.
I will. We'll do, I'll do that right after the meeting.
So Rob, the one that we have for you is okay?
We do that.
Yours is okay?
Yeah, I think so. I have no idea what email address you have.
I don't know. You weren't here that day.
Yeah, you weren't here.
So I need to email address.
So now the question is, what are we gonna do with these minutes? Because there are some issues with these minutes too.
How'd you remember all this? I mean, did you...
I didn't remember at all. I sent it to Rob because he had commented last month that he didn't think I was detailed enough, so I sent him what I had and asked him to look at it. And this is what he sent me back.
Almost need one of them in court. Or things like that.
So I won't do that anymore. I was told not to do them anymore, so I will just do them, and if they're wrong, we will change them here.
Okay. So these are your minutes or Rob's minutes?
Those were Rob's.
No, you sent me, I had corrected some spelling stuff and added some stuff.
That's not what I added.
No, I've put a few things in there, but not much. Well...
Yes, I've got my original.
You cannot do that. Changes are made at this table, period. No changes are made, the clerk's minutes are the clerk's minutes until they're approved here at this table. Changes are not made before that, unless it's a glaring grammatical error. That's understandable, but we don't add, we don't subtract, we don't do anything to these minutes until they come back here, period.
That was probably my fault because I sent them to him.
And the bottom of these, oh, never mind, we'll get to that in a minute.
And I guess I don't think I'm thinking...
So these have already been published.
Right.
I understand you wanted more detailed. But it was only one person asked. There's no question thrown out anymore about it. It was just done, you know? So it's no different than one, one person. We have to do it as a group. We can't just single-handedly say, "One person wants to do this," and have to redo it.
I was willing, I was willing at the last meeting to, let's, let's see what more detail is. That's fine. I was willing to go along with that. Now that I see what more detail is, I think we need to go back to what we were doing. I think that's the proper way to go.
So you want me to do them like I always have, and then if anybody wants anything changed, they can change them at the meeting?
At the meeting, yes.
It's your opinion.
You know, I mean, I agree with him. If it's gonna open us up to more liability, we should cut back on it, and I mean, if there's something we need to add, if it's not enough, and we think we need to add more, we can always add it, so...
Is there a happy medium?
Yeah, we do the minutes like we used to, and we sit here and we go, "Does anybody want to add anything to these minutes?" If we do, if we want to add more detail to it, we can talk about it, agree upon it, and go from there.
Yep, I agree.
Do we have a consensus?
Yep.
Yeah, that was my fault. I, I was trying to make sure they were okay, and they just got a little... Because I don't think I've ever typed minutes out of that long.
I've never seen minutes that were this long.
Traditionally, they're a page, maybe a page and a half.
Right, yeah.
Well, I'll be interested just to see this month how much the bill is, because it'd be...
I know it's not the register, but just for a help wanted ad...
Oh, it's part of the register.
It is. It's owned by the register.
Yeah.
I did a help wanted. I wanted to do a help wanted or now hiring. It was like this big, they wanted nine hundred bucks.
I was gonna say, these will probably be...
I'm dead serious.
That's what we mean. It's gonna be expensive. You're not...
Yeah, it's not gonna be cheap.
I won't even say what I, what I was thinking at the time.
So we're gonna take out a bond for this?
Yeah, yeah, we might have to take a loan out, save for that.
Obituaries are horribly expensive.
It will be cheap. Because the Des Moines Register owns that one.
Yep.
The billing comes from the register.
I understand where you're going by. That's where it comes back to.
And I was not trying to create any...
And you just, you just hit me where, where my ear is. Is that right in the wallet? I don't, that's, we can't do that.
I mean, even if we don't publish them, I think that's one reason why cities do make them short, because they have to publish them.
Okay, I don't know if we moved on yet, but I have a question.
We have to, we have to...
We've got some corrections here.
Grab the consent.
Okay. Before we move on to the minutes, I just have a question.
Ready? Okay.
More?
Yeah, I do.
That was, that was just about the length of the... Now we're getting to the content.
I do. If, uh... Since we're at this point now, where we're this detailed, um, for this particular set of minutes, we have to make sure that we don't leave any details out. For, uh, when we were talking about the cats and Chris Arnt, first paragraph of the last page.
First of Arnt. Last paragraph, second to last paragraph of the second page?
No, first paragraph of the last page.
Okay. Got you.
Right there, perfect. Okay, uh, says she was asked if, she was asked two questions, she responded no to both. That's fine. She did. Her husband then spoke up and said yes. They did, he did feel that they entered into a contract, and he did feel, did know that they were going to assume some cost because of it.
So you want that to go right after she's...
I absolutely, I want to disagree. I did not hear that.
He did, he did. He spoke up because she said no, and then he said, "Hang on, wait a minute." And he elaborated on that.
He, he can elaborate, but he was not part of the conversation.
He's her spouse.
I spoke to her on the phone, so...
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a good point.
Well, you didn't speak to her on the phone right here.
No, I spoke to her on the phone when we discussed the cat, so he, he has, was not part of that conversation. His interpretation came from his conversation with her, not with me.
That's fine, but I'm telling you, that's, that's what he said in these. If we're gonna get this detailed in the minutes, then you need to add that into these minutes.
No, and I'm fine with that, but just make sure it's clear that he derived that opinion not from a conversation with me.
I don't have a problem with that.
So you want them added?
It's because that's what he said here. And I understand that, but it's because that's what he said.
I wanted added that her husband disagreed.
Hold on. Just show me what you wanted at, like right here.
Right after, she said no, but, right in that section.
It had nothing to do with me expressing that's what's gonna happen.
Her husband spoke up and said, "Yes, we did feel we were in a contract."
See where detail goes?
This is exactly why they don't put detail in meeting minutes.
It's a bag of cats.
It is. That was horrible.
Okay, so if I put that in, then what do you want me to put in your... How he came to that conclusion, I guess, if he did talk to John.
I, you know what, at this point...
At the point of the minute, it's irrelevant because it was said in the meeting.
He could say that the sky is falling and John is crazy. He could say whatever he wants.
We paid it, so I guess...
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Yeah, that's, that's what he said, so...
I think she did it in good faith. I don't think she was expecting it, but he said he did the right thing to do, honestly.
Well, I have conversations that stated otherwise, which is why I brought it up in the meeting. So, from her.
But I always preface my conversations with, "This is not a committal from us." I do that.
That, that's fine, but that was not the way it was taken at the time. And that's what she said expressly to me, that that was not the way that it was taken at the time. So...
Well, and, and you, you bring up a good point. What is meant and what the perception is, is two different things.
Right.
So here's the deal, and this goes back even to the Josh thing. Was there a contract? Do we have any...
Verbally. Verbal contracts stand in the state of Iowa.
Yeah, I know, but was anything written down and agreed upon? And if he said, so right now you're in a he said, she said kind of a thing.
Exactly.
And I'm not writing that down.
I agree. I agree completely.
So if there was a contract, then something should have been written down, if there was something...
I agree.
With Josh here, if something should have been, we should have known what we were being charged before we did it.
What should have happened with the cats, we know what happened, we'll, we'll get into that. What ideally should have happened is we should have approached her, asked if she wanted to do that. If we wanted to do something with it right away, then fine, let's have a special meeting. That's what you're supposed to do. You have a special meeting, you put that one thing on the agenda, you approve it. It's done, it's in the minutes, it's written down, you have your contract, it's over.
I feel, are you telling me you approached her and then his viewpoint is approach, and then she went on upon her own? I would have liked her to have come in here, so we could have talked about it. The same, same with Josh.
I agree. Now, at this point, that's water under the bridge. I'm just saying, for the future, that's the way it should work.
Because in the minutes, all it really said was to send him a letter, which I did, to get rid of the cats.
Correct.
And that, and that I would speak to her, and I did.
And unfortunately, we can't go back on him because there was not enough time from when the letter was sent to when something was done about it. So we can't go back to the property owner and say, "Well, you didn't do anything," because he never had a chance to. He might even have the letter by the time the cats were taken care of. I don't know. So if we're gonna do that, that's fine, but we have to make sure they have enough time to take care of the problem before we take action on it.
So I guess we need to be a little more clear. Go take action.
Right, exactly.
And I don't know what you said, because I wasn't there either. All right, enough about cat conundrums, next.
Uh, the only other thing that I had was, uh...
So we can move on.
Was, uh, the phrase at the bottom of the minutes, well, I, I think it's okay, but I, most of them that I see... Was, uh, the phrase at the bottom of the minutes, well, I, I think it's okay, but I, most of them that I see, um, specifically mentioned something about this being a draft copy. It's just a little different wording, that's all, it's the same effect, so. I just happened to notice that, that every one of them that I saw, everything said draft copy, draft copy, draft copy, and this one was different.
I think it should have sounded that they have not been approved by the city council, that's what the auditor told me.
That's fine.
These city council minutes are draft copied and have not been approved.
Right, and I, that's what I would say, I would say they're a draft copy and have not been approved.
All right, but you're not posting these.
It doesn't matter, even up here, it should say that because they're not final minutes.
Right.
Yeah, not until they're.
They're posted before the meeting.
And then Donna has to sign them and I have to sign them, and then, then it's four.
Anything else you have?
Nope, go ahead.
Okay, so. I have a question about the library services. Is it just when a cut, when a resident goes to the library and signs up, that's when the city gets charged thirty bucks?
No, no, it, the city isn't charged thirty bucks. The customers charge thirty bucks.
We're charged twenty seven dollars, that's what we just got charged, yeah.
And once, it's on the agenda, but it's in the minutes, so I'll talk to you about it. What I did was, I talked to the, I was asked three different times and so I just got to the library, I said, what would be the deal if, uh, the city just signed up for the services, so that every resident of Des Moinesville could enjoy the libraries? She sent down a, a copy of a contract and it.
It was terribly, it was like twenty seven hundred dollars.
Twenty seven hundred bucks for the year for the whole, for all the residents.
So it's thirty dollars per resident whether they use the service or not?
No, no, it's, it's thirty dollars per resident if they use it. The resident is responsible for that. If the city pays for it, it's twenty seven hundred dollars and then the residents are automatically eligible to go there and get a free card. And they get to use like, was it four hundred?
Something like that.
Four hundred libraries in the, or in the.
So basically, the city could pay for it and cover the entire city, or the individual that wants to use the library can go up and do it, so they get a thirty dollar charge.
It went from like thirty bucks per person to six dollars per person if the city covered it. But is every resident gonna take advantage of that?
And we had this at one time and it, not enough people were using it.
Okay, so could we, is there anything that we could do that the people that do wanna go up there and pay the twenty seven dollars can get something? Cause I've always, every little small town I've ever heard of has some type of contract available for people to go to a library and get free, a free membership.
Well, and that was, that was the deal, we were paying, and if I, if I, if I understand this right, the city was paying for it. But six people, six people were doing it, so it ended up being, you know, three hundred dollars a person.
And it took us twenty seven hundred dollars on that.
Go ahead and, and when I talked to her about it, it was, it was, it was significantly higher. And then I said, is there any way that we can look at this, you know, as far as usage goes? So what she actually did was went back and billed us for past, the past year's usage and went off of that and kinda prorated it to us. And it was still twenty seven hundred dollars, so.
The juice isn't worth the squeeze, really.
All I did was bring the information and, and put it out, I'm, I'm not, I, I'm indifferent either way. If, if you guys wanna do it, great, if you don't wanna do it, great.
I don't wanna pay that much, I was, that's ridiculous.
That's what we thought.
Can you go to Indian Hills Library too?
Uh, only through my mother-in-law who has a membership there, yeah.
Now, didn't she tell you if they pay, they can go to the other library?
Yeah, it, uh, like four hundred libraries in the state and you get every bit of their services, one hundred percent of their services.
Well, we just paid for it, but actually, the lady told, you know, that the city was working on something, so. That's why.
There you go.
Oh boy, here we go.
And all I did was ask for information.
No, she, I, I don't know what the exact wording was, I'm not trying to say anything like that. She just hinted that there was a conversation about something like that, so. But I just wanted to see that because, uh, you know, we're tired of paying for a library, which it's not a big deal, whatever. If we could get it through the city and give it to the residents, but obviously the residents don't use it, so.
Now it's hard to cost that much.
Let's move on.
Yeah, and, and the thing is, is when they went through the usage, it could have been the same person hitting them thirty five times. And that would account as thirty five hits, so. Any other, any other questions, comments, flavor for this? Okay, motion for the consensus agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Who's second?
All in favor?
Aye.
That's your board.
Okay, um, Dan Lee, they had their liquor license up early in the morning, so we need a motion to, um, approve their liquor license.
Or get ice cream and Pepsi back. Fountain and ice cream, that's what we want back. Tell them that. We deny your approval.
We're gonna, we're gonna hold them off.
I need a quick, uh, quick trip truck down here.
He's working, side room.
I was getting a little excited. So.
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license.
You got a motion to approve the liquor license, you got a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You may have missed approval.
Okay, so, um, I talked to City State Bank about investment policy. Really, it's not a big, big deal, this is no city's, uh, sample. And it's, you either put it, put your money in a CD for a year, whatever you wanna do, or you put it in an investment and they'll help determine that. If you need the money, you can get it out at any time, unless it's in a ten-year CD, you probably can't, but, um, it's just a way, I guess, the way they're saying is to show that you're trying to save money if possible. So this is like a sample of what it would entail. And then the city council would have to decide if they wanna buy bonds. He said you don't wanna do anything like the stock market or because it's public.
Let's gamble, let's gamble, guys.
Take it a fragment.
So, he suggested either like even a year, two-year CDs and just putting a small amount in to begin with, just to satisfy the auditor that way, yes, we have got an investment plan and blah, blah, blah. And then you can add to that, when the CD's up, you could put more in if, if you don't need to spend it or.
A CD's your safest bet, a bond would be the second, a bond you can get out anytime and not pay a penalty. A CD, if you need the money right away, you are gonna pay a penalty if you have to withdraw it. But if you're talking a one-year, two-year CD and you're only using twenty-five percent of your funds and you know you're not gonna touch it, then that's your safe bet.
You know, that can only be spent on certain, that would be a good one, I think, to put into a CD.
No, a CD, does a CD have a higher return than, than a bond?
No. Well, the, the, the return on nothing anymore is very good, he said.
We just should buy land. We should just buy land.
Yeah.
I mean, they don't pay like they used to.
Yeah, a CD, a good CD before was five percent return, this is like a quarter of that, or a quarter percent, like.
It's not.
Maybe one percent if you have a lot of money. I mean, it's not good, but it's better than sitting in a savings making point zero two percent. You know? And if you know you're not gonna need it and they're asking for it out of the audit, might as well just be safe and throw it in a CD.
You know, I would feel comfortable putting twenty thousand dollars out of Rogers Tax or even twenty thousand out of Rogers, out of sewer reserve, because that money is being saved for bond payments and we've got enough already for the first bond payment, so that money could be earning a little bit more interest. Especially if you're only gonna do like a year.
Right.
And that would suffice the audit?
Yep, they would know at least that we've got an investment plan. And this is basically all it is, it's not a big deal.
Do we get a resolution to do that?
Um, let me call the lawyer to make sure what we need to do.
Does anybody know what like Des Moines or what these people do with all their money in the account? I mean, they'd be stupid not to have it in a bond or something like that, making money for them, but does anybody know what they do with the funds? Like, doesn't just sit in a savings or a?
No idea.
Wonder what they do.
They probably have a lot more money than we do.
They have somebody hired professionally to take.
I'm sure they have several people doing their finance.
A lot of the small cities, they, they don't have a lot of money to invest. But at least it shows the auditor that we are trying, I mean, that's what we're trying to do with the audit, is trying to comply with what they're asking for.
Yeah, cause they want all the money.
I mean, it's, it's a, one way of just putting a lot of money away.
Put twenty grand in there and make fifty bucks.
Or you could put, you know, put the sewer reserve in a CD and put the Rogers Tax in a bond. You can put in both places, I guess.
Well, I think, I think it would be, um, a wise idea to find out if we need to have a resolution for that first, and that way we know exactly which direction we have to go.
I can tell you that a bond right now would be, it's a good time for a bond.
And he said either one is probably, the bond's the same.
A bond is, the bonds are gonna go up, I mean, rates are gonna go up. Bonds will go up. It can't be this low that much longer.
So I'll call, well, I don't know, they could plan it after the elections.
Yeah, that's true. Anything can happen after the election, that's true.
So I'll call the lawyer.
Best time to buy in the stock market is right after, like, everybody pulls out, freaks out.
Ordinance book update, that's what this is. So these are, you know, all of this, she said we won't do it, all of it, but these are just things that we could do if we wanted, um, before they complete the ordinance book. So, she said the best way city councils normally do this is they have a workshop. Like outside or something, they go through, leave their decisions in.
Wonder if we could get a.
Understand how long it's gonna take for us to go through that.
But you're not gonna act on all of them.
Oh, no, no, but just to go through and have a discussion, I mean.
So you need to read it ahead of time? We're not gonna have the ordinance book till this is done. So.
So have a special meeting at some point?
Gentlemen.
Cases of beer?
And as I say, where's, where's your calendar? Sounds like we got a tough road to hoe here.
Boy, you're not gonna be able to do that city council meeting.
No, 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 I meant, not, unless we order some food.
And then what happens is this all goes into the ordinance book and then once it's all updated, the attorney does one resolution of ordinance to each other and it's for, to adopt the brand new ordinance book. So.
Well, the quickest way to do it would be to have a workshop, have everybody go through it and fill out, fill in the blanks and then just sit down and come to a consensus on the, on that stuff.
That's what she did.
That would be pretty simple.
What do you think, ninety percent of this is just gonna be okay? I mean.
Well, some of it we won't even do.
In there too.
I see, there's blanks.
Or B, or you, or it's.
Or you don't have to do it.
None of the above.
Or what name do you want in this blank and it's like, holy cow. I don't know.
I don't know. But she's right, this is time to do it since you're updating, uh, updating the whole ordinance book.
Yep.
Do you guys wanna kick your can for a few weeks, till we can read it and get, get familiar with it? Do you want to, you know, look in maybe a week and a half or two weeks and try to mark all the dark ones?
Is there enough time to read it and then have, when we have our next meeting?
Can you do it like on the twentieth?
Of this month?
That gives us most two weeks.
No, you can't. Twenty-seven?
Saturdays are out.
Sa- Saturdays are off.
Kinda where I'm at, it'll be tough for me too.
I've got twenty-seventh, isn't gonna work.
What about Sunday?
You gotta pay your double time.
You could come right after church.
Well, Sunday afternoons are out for me.
Oh, there you go.
When do they want this back by?
You don't want the ordinance book in just twenty minutes, I want it in the ordinance book.
I think it'd be a good winter project.
Could we, uh, well, I was, we wouldn't be able to do the, uh, just sit down at like, you know, I don't know what time everybody gets home from work though. I'm thinking, get here a little early on our next meeting and then do our city council and then finish after.
Are you, uh, you're ever.
You, you under, you understand that we're gonna be here.
Eight hours, you think?
I, I bet, I bet a lion's share of eight hours.
You don't have to do it all at once.
Maybe you could, uh.
That's true, good point. Knock out a little bit of that time.
So let's break it into sections of four.
Sure.
We'll read the first section and then decide when we're gonna meet and go over that section.
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't like any of you yet, well enough to sit in a room for eight hours. There's the truth. Yeah, maybe bigger. Exactly.
So when do you wanna do the first one?
You wanna say?
If time is not a factor, why don't we do, break it into sections and do it, the meeting and after.
So this won't actually be a city council meeting? It's not gonna be a formal where you have to post and it's just gonna be a workshop?
I understand that, but you'll have your workshop after your city council meeting and then it's one trip and we do it.
So you wanna do it at the first one at this meeting?
No, because no one's rad.
Three of us here talking about city business, correct?
Yeah, the first quarter.
There'd be a forum and we'd be talking about city business, so technically it would.
Post it as a workshop.
Right, yeah, there's, you can make the distinction between what's a meeting and what's a workshop.
Well, that's gonna take four months.
You know?
Yeah, but what, what is, he asked and I, maybe I didn't hear, what's the time pack? When do you have to have it done by?
Well, I don't think they want it to.
They're, they're waiting.
I don't think they want it to.
Well, good winter project.
Yeah, I mean, does it matter?
It sort of does, doesn't it?
Please explain.
Because we have a lot of ordinances that were not in that book, that we use now.
And I believe what's gonna happen is once the ordinances, once our book is done, we're gonna get, you said each of us will get a disc?
It'll be electronic.
With, with the copies of it and then it's also gonna be posted to the website?
Yeah, because it'll be electronic.
Okay, but these ordinances that are in the books that you've been using that aren't in this book, how long have they been out there? I mean, you've gone this far, what's four more months?
Some are, well, I'll have to ask her how long they will keep it. Cause they've had it a while and I'll just have to make sure they'll keep it that long.
So they start the next meeting to do it.
So how much do you break it up?
There's nothing saying we can't meet once a week or whatever.
We can, but, so how much in the first meeting?
I suggest we go all the way till chapter forty-six, where it said reminders.
What is that, one chapter?
No, it's a couple. It's got a lot of suggestions and, um, chapter four.
You know what might be a good idea is if everybody read it before they came and sort of had an idea what their.
That's what we're doing.
It doesn't have, it doesn't have much of a plot.
We're gonna read this for the, the first meeting.
Okay, so you're gonna do it in four parts, starting in the September meeting? Is that what I'm getting there? After the meeting.
Yes, we'll play a little meeting and we'll have a workshop, which.
And then if you come back and say that we have, that suspense is sooner than we anticipate. Well, the, the time you have to have it done is sooner than we think, four months, then we will make, we will shift at that point and make corrections.
Hey, we're working like the real government, okay? We don't move fast right here.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
So on the fifth, we are going to extend our meeting from six to seven and then we're going to have.
What?
Our meetings.
Our meetings are never an hour.
They're gonna start again? Just speed this process up.
I'll make it till nine-thirty.
Nine-thirty?
Six to nine-thirty, yeah. I think that's pretty great. I'm just allotting myself that much time.
Maybe we should bring a banker in for the, uh, to talk. Maybe we should bring a banker in for the, uh, to talk to us what the best options would be with their.
Any more questions or comments on the ordinances book update?
I'm talking to a banker.
Yeah, I, I, my mortgage side, I just know a little bit, be dangerous, okay? Right, we need to bring in a professional for that though.
That's who I'm talking to. All right, Bob?
Nothing.
You got nothing?
Nothing.
You get, you have, um. Do you have anything coming up? Trying to think what it is. We, we spoke about the DOT last meeting and the, and the tree.
Okay, oh, just remember something, DOT. The emails and stuff that you guys did back and forth to the DOT. Can I get a copy of those for City Hall? Because that's city business that we should have a copy of.
It's all public record.
I have a problem with that.
If somebody could just print it out for me?
I'll just forward it to you.
That's good, that's all I need.
Sure.
Yeah, anything that, anything that you're sending as a representative has gotta be.
We just need a copy.
We should have a, a copy on file so that it's a, this is a public records thing. If we had a public records request, she'd have to try to come up with all this, with all those files.
I'm absolutely, I'm absolutely, uh, happy to do that.
Sure.
Okay. Wait, so you said you had nothing, all right? All right.
I'll write down tomorrow on this duck pointing, don't scare me nasty with that.
Yeah.
How many do you want, one?
Wait a minute, what's duck pointing?
Tuck pointing.
Tuck, tuck pointing, it's the.
For the fixing the brick.
We're getting it in the minutes. I didn't even know somebody was looking at it.
I don't have an estimate yet.
Yeah, you do.
Okay.
That's just day-to-day business.
Yeah. We bring an estimate to the table and say, okay.
Is the building falling down? Cause I don't wanna be in here if it is.
No, not.
Why'd we put all that dirt up there?
Don't keep us quiet. What? To make you ask why?
I did.
Say why?
Just get in here.
What's the dirt for?
Got a little water in the basement that lasted every rain, I put some dirt around there.
A little?
Little backfill.
Yeah.
Backfill.
Flood or slope away instead of in?
The water payments were flooded.
It did not come from the basement though.
Well. I don't know where it came from, but I have this whole table full of people's water payments.
Whenever the wind blows real hard and rains like that.
They were drenched.
Water ran.
Well, yeah, yeah. Yeah. I think.
Can we put an awning over it?
It's got to. Pardon?
Can we put an awning over the drop box?
Now they're getting a new different drop box, I don't know how it's stopping.
I mean, they were soaked. I had to leave them out for like a couple days.
Tell mother nature not to rain so hard.
Okay.
Banks accusing her of fleeting chess.
All right.
Maybe you could put like a Walmart sack or something in there.
It's not from the inside, it's coming from the outside. If you put a Walmart sack over it, they won't be able to put their feet in it. I suggested an awning.
Okay.
So to keep it dry.
Scott?
A total of nineteen calls, twelve EMS, three fire and four for storm related issues.
Wait a minute, nineteen calls, what?
Twelve EMS.
Yeah?
Three fire. And four for other storm spotting, storm related issues.
Are those the ones that we received or the ones we responded to?
That's the ones we have received for the month of June, or October.
Okay, did we respond to all of those?
We responded to all of them.
Okay, that's. Well, I, I know sometimes like we don't have people in town, so when we get, when we get trips and sometimes it trips to other places, that's why, that's why I was asking you.
So you want me to go back and try to break those all down?
Oh, no, no, just, if, if, if you're reporting the ones that you respond to, then.
I'm reporting the number of calls that times our pagers go off.
And they, and.
And we respond to probably ninety-nine percent of them.
Okay, that's.
And the ones that we don't respond to, I'm sorry, but we all have jobs in Des Moines or other places.
I understand that, I was just, I was just. Curious as to, as to how we're, how we're approaching it.
We, we have mutually agreements with people that.
Yeah, that, yeah.
They take care of.
Um. I understand that the fire department is working with Norwalk and the schools now to access their security cameras and. Their security feed, is that, is that correct?
That's just what you hear on the news, I guess, I, that's all I hear. What you, what you read on the news and heard on the news, that's all I know.
That's where I heard it, I was like, oh, wow, that, cuz I thought that was a great idea.
I didn't hear about that.
It said, that's, the news report said that Norwalk and Martinsdale are working in a joint venture to. When they respond to schools, that they can get into the school's security cameras and see what's going on in there. I don't know, to see if someone's down in the hall or.
Okay.
That, that was, that was.
That's what they said on the news, that Martinsdale, Marshalltown and Norwalk. And if they really think Martinsdale's gonna get on board with it, you guys better come up with a lot of money.
Well, that's.
You're gonna be putting hotspots in all the trucks. And you're gonna take computers in all the tr- and put computers in all the trucks.
So you're not.
And then, you know, just barely could afford what they just, there, so. So don't, don't get excited.
So what you're saying is no one has contacted you on this?
Okay, and that's, that's why I was asking, it's like, I just didn't get it from the sources that.
Yes, no, I, I know nothing about it.
I'll interject just a little bit, since Norwalk, Norwalk City shares the tech guy with the school, it's probably a little bit easier to make that link up between them two. Because it's the same, same tech guy that contracts out to the city for their tech services as what does the school, so. That's probably where that got started.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just saw that, that, you know, our names were on it, I was like, cool.
So the news even lies.
But you think?
No, I mean, there's probably something working with the schools. I'm not saying that they say a hundred percent of stuff, oh, it's fine, cuz they don't, I know that, but.
Well, I don't, I don't even know if the school has security cameras, I know they're putting some in the parking lot.
I'm sure Tom Woods working with them, cuz it's, and I'm sure that's one of the things that the least amount they said is the better.
Does Norwalk schools have cameras?
Yeah. All through the hallways, some on the perimeter.
Really?
Yeah. They're, they're low jack.
But I don't think anybody was trying, or if I knew, you know.
Big monitor. Like a big brother watching.
You know what I mean, kinda like your job, the least amount said is probably better, but I don't know anything.
Well, think about just, you know, school shootings and stuff, I mean, the benefit of having, of course, they could shoot out the camera system, but the benefit of having that in there where the. Police could see where, what's going on and where everybody's at and. Anyway.
Ruby, any public comments?
Yes. Um. Okay, so this came after the agenda for dance, so I'm gonna do the public comment. So it's a five-year agreement to repair a road in Dade County. Is this what you, I had talked to him about, John?
Talked to who?
DOT. Is this what you had talked to him about?
Uh-uh.
No? That's why I thought it came from them.
A quick glance, it looks like what they're saying is, we're gonna take care of the highway.
Right, it looks like a basic maintenance agreement.
That's it. Yeah, yeah, so I don't see what the change is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or both highways?
Both.
Twenty-eight, ninety-two.
Which is theirs anyways, but I think they're just letting this know that.
They may work in our, our, our community. Yeah, I don't see any issue with that.
Let's see. Was it section three? Number four, I guess, number four, during each district assessment loaded against the primary rule within a municipality shall be shared equally by the department of municipality. They want, they want us to pay them to clean out the ditches like they're supposed to. That's what this looks like to me.
Oh. But I thought you said they agreed to do that?
They did.
So then I don't think you should sign it.
Oh, no, this, this is from here on. They're gonna pay, they paid for the first cleaning, they want us to, to kick in if they're gonna be out there cleaning them regularly like they said they would. Because they neglected them for so long.
But didn't you say that eventually they agreed that they would take care of them?
Every five years.
Oh, every five years, okay.
Is that what, is that not what Mitch said?
We wouldn't have to.
No, they, they want us to help, they want us to help shoulder the expense, is the way I read this. They want us to pay for half of it, which it should never get to the condition that it was. Previously. If it's done routinely.
So how much could that be? Could that end up being like fifty thousand dollars?
Gosh, no way.
Bet that costs a lot more than you think.
I know, it does too.
Well, for what they did, I imagine that was, that was quite costly, but to go down and, and just to clean up the ditch routinely, I can't imagine that.
Just the maintenance.
Yeah, just, just regular maintenance. There's no way.
Well, because it does say major construction shall be covered under a separate agreement.
Yeah, so if they, if they wanna, if we wanna do something and they wanna do something, that, that doesn't, uh, that doesn't apply to this agreement.
So the ditches of state highways are technically the DOT's as well?
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
But they, they want us to help pay for the stuff that's in town, within the city limits.
Okay.
No, they can ask.
Well, if we sign this, it's saying it is.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying, they can ask.
Because I thought that, I might be thinking of something else, that you were trying to get them to just do it every five years or just keep up on it at their expense.
And that's, and that's what, that's what, uh, it still had originally said it would do.
So maybe you shouldn't sign this.
Yeah, and I, I see this is from the district engineer, which tells me this is from Armstrong. Cuz he didn't, he didn't wanna have to do his job.
So maybe you should just wait until, tell us that you have this.
I think, I think what I'll do is I'll, I'll.
This is why we need emails, so we can all make educated decisions.
Well, the, the, what Mitch said, that was.
This is the first time we've met each other.
Right. Uh, it was, it was in a conver- face-to-face conversation rather than an email, there wasn't documentation on that.
So what?
Well, is, is that what you took away from that conversation? When we met with Mesh, that he would, that he, didn't he say he would keep that up every five years?
Nah, I didn't hear the five-year part, but.
Are they gonna mow that then down there now it's all grass?
It's their ditch, they should.
Yeah.
If they can get in there, they can mow it, yeah, they'll mow it.
Yeah.
So what do you wanna do?
This was just given to us, no one's had a chance to read it, correct?
Right, yeah.
Let's read it, do a little thinking about it, he will forward you the email, so you have more, all the information.
Table it till September.
Postpone, yeah.
Put it on, put it on next Monday.
Again, I think there's a quick suspense on that one.
Okay. Any other public comments?
Is this gentleman?
Oh, yeah, to ask one of these.
I just wanted to thank you for the street.
Oh.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Yeah.
Good job out of you.
Yeah.
Well, they're not here, so you should claim it.
He orchestrated it. Yeah, tried that last year and it didn't show up.
We got the, the old grill there.
So is this the lot thirteen that is directly behind his house?
Behind the new one.
Mm-hmm.
Behind the, the new one that is.
Oh. Okay.
I, uh, so I.
Lot behind Harold Rosina?
No, behind his son, he built the house for his son.
Oh, the house he built.
Yeah.
So I went down ninety-two and I tried to look up there and see the stuff and.
I see, I see a truck there. Yeah, I see a truck there.
Yeah.
No, not a truck, there's a bunch of, you go down here and drive down around where the old highway was.
Yeah.
You go down to where the turnaround is at the end where we used to have the recycle stuff. Well, the reason they quit bringing the recycle bin was because people would go down there and dump trash. Well, that's exactly what's sitting down there, there's a couple old cabinets and that kinda stuff. I highly doubt that it's John Seymour that's dumping trash there, but somebody has at some point. And I guess he apparently happens to own that property, so.
You know what I'm talking about with that truck though, it looks like trees are overgrowing it. You've seen it?
I'd have to look, I don't remember that.
Is that the same area that we're talking about?
Hush.
Is that the John?
Technically, yeah.
And it looks like trees are growing over it, so it seems like it's been sitting there for.
It's only parked there once in a while, I think.
It's cuz them trees just hang down.
Oh, okay.
But it looks like it.
All right. Gotcha.
So it's been moved?
Guess I hadn't noticed that, but.
Yeah. Well.
Well, I was gonna say, the only thing I, I really, that really jumped out at me, um, other than those two cabinets was the pile of debris that's in the orchard just south of my house.
Yep, I noticed that this morning too.
It's spolers every, every three months.
Well, is this something that Uyghur could pick up?
Hmm, sure it could.
Yeah, it is.
So, just make sure that it clarified that, you know what I mean? Cause that's a, that's a, like a day-to-day thing where this, we have ordinance for that.
Or do we send John a letter?
Send him a letter first.
Yes.
Ain't you saying anything about Harold, he has a pile of wood down there, it's been there long enough.
That's what we were just talking about, yeah.
You might want, you might want to go back to Harold too.
Oh, God.
Maybe practice burns in Old Grenoble.
Nope, that might be a bad idea, for bringing.
What am I actually telling him to remove?
Any.
The cabinets and debris, I, I'm not sure what all's there, I didn't get out and go look through it.
Is it trash?
Whatever your garbage dump.
Yeah, your garbage dump. It's, there's some old cabinets and like an old desk or something there. It's just.
Yeah.
Household garbage.
And in the letter, it does state, if, if this is not done in fifteen days, the city will act at your expense.
But we don't know if it's actually his though, right? Or is it on?
Well, that's probably his property. And that's why you get the fifteen days to act, to say, hey, this ain't mine.
Okay, gotcha.
What can you help me with, then you have to come back?
Okay. So then, do you want me to send Harold a letter stating that? Uh, I don't know.
I'm not okay with that one.
Or do you wanna just tell him?
Just do four words, we looked into it.
Do you see him?
Yeah, he, I see Harold.
Can't you just tell them that?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm just putting here Rose will speak to you. Rose.
Yes.
I'm sure if you go around town, there's lots of other garbage and vehicles that aren't supposed to be sitting there that are sitting there.
Ordinants, any, any other things on Harold's letter?
Okay, so this, uh, information back here. I put this in here because it was given to me by the gentleman. And I was just told they give it to, they do have cities that have golf carts, but they just want this, for the city council, they have this.
What's funny is I'm reading this and it's talking about speed and noise and they could fall out at any moment, and it's like, are you explaining a bicycle?
That sounded a lot like bicycles to me.
What's the difference between a kid riding a bike, it doesn't make no noise, they could fall off at any moment. Uh, they can't keep the speed up with traffic, it's like, I don't really see.
Um, I also know that.
Drive a lawnmower on the road.
EMC, of the two major insurance companies that cover municipalities, EMC is one of them, the other is ICAP. ICAP has no problem with golf carts.
I see, ours is with EMC, although he said, we do have cities that allow golf carts. It's a city council decision, so, and he said if it's, there are cities that they use golf carts and they don't have an ordinance, which, then that falls back onto the state code, so it's like, okay.
It, it definitely sounds like they're trying to convince you of not doing it, I mean, it, it's just because they know that if something ever did happen. I don't know.
I, I see this as a risk assessment and they're just letting you know what the risks are, and you are again taking the liability away from the state and assuming that at the city level, I think it pretty well says that in there, and they want you to know what the hazards are. And you make your informed decision based upon that. Because nowhere in here does it say you can't, but they let you know that there could be.
And, and that seems to be the difference between the two insurance carriers, ICAP just has nothing, they don't make any, uh, they don't take a stance like this.
It's just like, hey, your kid's about to go ride a bike, let me show you the, uh, risk of that, okay, they have no lights, they have lack of warning horn. They're quiet, they can't keep up with traffic, I mean, it's like.
The, uh.
Yeah.
The.
Well, actually.
State attorney actually does speak to bicycles and they are granted all rights and privileges of a motor vehicle on the road.
But they don't have a warning horn, or can't keep up a speed.
They are granted all rights and privileges of a, of a vehicle on the road, and if the city was to pass an ordinance that was to restrict that, that would be a violation of state law, and they cannot do that, that is, that is the county, or the state attorney's.
Yes, maybe we need to look at switching insurance carriers, yeah.
Well, keep in mind, these guys did not say you couldn't, they just said, this is the risk. And I guess they probably, the reason why they've written this down is they probably had to. Pay.
There you go.
They probably had to pay out a few times, that's why they're.
When, uh, when I talk.
They don't like to pay.
I talked with, um, Milo, which is where we got our ordinance from, and, uh, the clerk down there had nothing but praises for ICAP, she thought it was the greatest thing they'd ever done, so, um. They said they've never had an incident where there's been any trouble, um, with, with golf carts or claims, or getting claims paid, or, or anything like that either, so.
Well, actually, the ordinance enforcing more restrictions to the golf carts?
Yes, and because, becau- and this is from what I understand, this was her take on what ICAP's stance is. That since we're requiring the golf carts to have liability insurance, it's, it's their deal. If they're somewhere where they're not supposed to be, that's on them.
Yeah.
It doesn't come back on the city.
That's true. I mean, if you carry a vehicle, if I get in a car wreck out here, am I suing the city, or am I, no, my, my insurance company, or their insurance company deals, duke it out.
And that's what ICAP's take is on it, that, that's, they're carrying their liability and that's on them.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Cause yeah, if you fall back to the state code, the state code doesn't require you to have insurance.
Yeah.
However, the city and individual could both be named on any kind of litigation or lawsuit. I mean, that, that's not unheard of either.
Yeah, you can name anybody, but that doesn't mean it can stand up.
I don't understand how the city is at fault.
I'm just.
Yeah.
You have to stop sign fell down, you didn't put it back up in time, someone whacked somebody else, then the city's liable, that kind of.
Yeah, but that goes with anything, not just golf.
Yeah, I know that, but I'm, you're asking, who's asking that question?
Yeah, that's right, unfortunately, we have too many lawyers for common sense.
Oh, boy.
So, I guess the one thing I did not see in this ordinance was what if somebody's driving a golf cart without being registered? I mean, what, what difference are, are we than you driving your golf cart the other day, I mean, where, where are we different?
You mean like?
I mean, we all, we all knew that, once after our last meeting, that driving your golf carts is a violation of the state law.
Nope, it's not a violation of state law.
It is.
And no, and we can't, just because we said that when you left here, that, it means nothing, it's not illegal to drive, I go drive my golf cart right down the road.
So then why do we need an ordinance?
We don't, if you don't wanna have one, we don't need one, we'll just continue to keep driving down the road, without getting twenty-five bucks.
Then why are we doing this, why did we pay the lawyer?
Well, I think this. Just remember, it falls back to the state code clarifies, you must be sixteen years of age to operate a golf cart on a city street.
You also have to have the orange sticker on the back, you also have to have the flag, I understand that.
But you don't have to have lights, is that for you?
You have to have, you have to be a licensed driver.
Lights.
No, no lights.
You don't have to have lights.
Drive it at night.
Just like a moped.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And drive it at night, what?
You don't have to have lights, but you can drive it at night, doesn't say.
Oh, no, daylight hours only.
Well, back to John.
Don't worry about that part.
Pardon?
Back to your question.
What question's that? Well, what, what's, what's the point, what's the point, I mean?
If they're not registered.
Yeah, if they're not registered, what's the, uh, what's the penalty?
Well, I say we just, I think your point right after that is, uh, the best, I say we just leave it as is and.
Here's.
Okay, again, where do you get the, you can do this, incorporated areas may, upon approval of their gov- governing body allow the operation of golf carts on city streets by persons possessing a valid driver's license.
Right.
So you, when you may allow it, if you pass an ordinance, up to that point, it's not allowed.
Or we allow it by, by not.
I have a question, I talked to the deputy and he says he goes back to the state code too, yeah.
And I've talked to trooper and deputies and they've all told me that you can't, and even the deputy that I talked to coming through town.
I think if you pat.
I talked to Sheriff Fox himself.
If the state of Iowa says that, then that means it would be allowed unless we pass an ordinance saying that you can't, is that right?
Yeah, incorporated areas may, upon approval of their governing body, allow the operation of a golf cart on city streets by persons possessing a valid driver's license.
So we can allow it in town if we pass an ordinance?
Or, or is it our approval is the fact that we're not, we're not passing an ordinance against it?
This is what the insurance guy told me, if they don't pass it, they can still drive their golf cart, that's exactly what he said. But if something was to happen, it would fall back under the state, not the city, that's what he told me.
That to me.
So.
We don't.
Well, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to the district, I do not see it that way at all, but, drive on, drive on.
Get it, make sure you're sixteen, get an orange flag, you can drive on the bicycle paths.
No.
So maybe we should post that.
They are, they, it's after, it's after July.
Alright.
Permits are no longer valid.
Need an orange flag.
So I'm, you don't agree that the state code.
Well, so we just need to make, someone needs to make a motion if we're gonna get rid of this ordinance and continue on the, the way we are. And then we have to take a vote, and then his disagreement comes in the net.
Okay, so, wait a minute, when you vote.
Sorry.
Make sure you say, leave things, um, let's see.
To not pass the resolution.
Because people, you have to let it known that people are driving golf carts right now.
Correct.
In the city limits, without any kind of penalty from the city.
So, can I get a motion to not restrict the use of golf carts?
I'll make a motion.
Wait a minute, first of all, we have to make a, or, make a motion that this ordinance is invalid.
Well, it's, it's not, it's, it hasn't been valid.
But it's got a, it's got an ordinance number on it.
Okay.
And it was posted.
Can I get a motion to dismiss ordinance eight, zero eight, zero one two, zero one six?
I'll make a motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll make the second.
Do we need a roll call loop?
Sure.
Rob?
Well, you know when I'm gonna say no.
Hi.
You don't want to dismiss it?
Do you wanna dismiss it or not?
I do not want to dismiss it.
Alright.
Scott?
Hi.
Oh, wait a minute, cause you threw me off here. Gosh. So you're saying nay.
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 Okay, go.
Hi.
Hi.
Nay.
What'd you say?
Nay.
Nay?
I think we should have this.
And.
Hi.
So there you go, motion carried.
We are dismissing the ordinance.
Wait a minute.
We have dismissed it.
You are really putting me off tonight.
Safety.
So, okay, I make a motion.
Wait a minute. You said a, yes?
Motion carries with majority vote.
You guys are getting charged for me.
Mr. Henson's ready to make a motion.
To continue use of golf carts as we have. And you have, with the addition of the orange flag, and still moving sign.
That's an ordinance, so.
No, no, first state law.
First state law, okay. First state law.
Yeah.
That's, just, if we just leave it with per state law. Here's the problem though, if you read the wording of the state law.
It says the.
The state law says if you've approved it, then this applies. So if we haven't approved it, then how does that apply? That's the problem.
They don't say anything, we just.
That's the problem.
We dismiss this.
Alright.
Why don't you want to do the ordinance?
We stay the course.
Just leave it alone.
We'll just stay the course.
Okay, but the. I am sorry for what I'm about to say.
Oh, God.
But then that takes out the sixteen-year-old thing.
No, it doesn't, cause it goes to the state law.
No, you're not putting that in there, you just took it out.
Cause we, it refers back to, we didn't take out the state code.
We're not talking about city ordinance.
We, we took out the city ordinance, we fall, we fall back to the state of Iowa code.
State of Iowa code.
Yes, we, then we fall back to state of Iowa code for driving golf carts.
Which.
And what did you just say?
Okay, so where's the, hang, hang on, hang on, I mean, we can hang on.
I think, we dismiss the ordinance.
Oh, no wonder you're saying.
Yeah, it's just.
Yeah, just.
It's it, move it along. We have ordinance submitting the code ordinance to the city of Marcusville, by adding a.
So I'm taking this whole thing out?
Which one is? We dismiss.
Is that what you're looking for?
No, he said take this.
Yeah, we dismiss golf ordinance, and he's not making a motion on, on anything.
Wow.
Okay.
Wait a minute, cause we're not done with this, I don't think.
Why, we've passed it, there's been discussion.
There's been nothing passed.
Yeah, we just did, we, we dismissed the ordinance for the golf carts.
Yeah, but.
That was, that.
He's still reading on golf carts.
Okay, I was wrong, I didn't say quite what I said, what I thought.
So are you done now?
Wasn't saying anything. Go on. I'm just making sure.
Wow. You know, I wish you were still in that little cubscoot, uh, uniform, making coffee. You were quiet.
You're drinking coffee in a cubscoot uniform?
No, not drinking coffee, making coffee.
Oh, oh, okay.
I used to come and make the coffee, see, everybody at meetings used to drink coffee, so I used to come make the coffee for every meeting, when Dad came down to.
Was it good coffee?
I don't remember, I just know he was quiet.
I would love to have a cup of coffee, here.
Do we even have a coffee pot anymore?
I'll take a Keurig, alright?
Yeah.
He also used to help the mayor put out a newsletter so the community could inform.
True.
We did, I used to do it.
Newsletter?
I did.
Lord.
You sent it out.
Yeah, but after you left, I did it.
You didn't tell me about that.
I have told you about that before, so you can't claim that, cause I have talked about Mayor's newsletter before.
Okay. You're operating on the assumption that.
Okay, you actually listen?
Okay.
Okay, I'll make note of that, John.
Next door, that's, this is for the, um, water.
Yes.
Meters.
What'd I miss? Oh. And the purpose of this would be to help people that. People that fill up pools or water their lawn, it's gonna be a lot less money.
More, it's more towards irrigation, correct?
Yeah, that's the way it's supposed to be, I thought.
Yes.
Normally.
Well, and then they have to buy the meter that we tell them.
Yes.
Or whatever.
Okay, I don't see it, but if you use it a lot, it'll pay for itself, I'm assuming.
Yes.
Yeah.
And it's not so much for the people we have now, but for any future development or any improvement, people are gonna be like, you know, I'll go water my lawn.
So we have a specific meter, we're saying, here's the approved meter, I got you.
As it stands right now, and if you, if you say you do a thousand gallons through your, your regular meter right now, you're also charged for a thousand gallons of sewer. This would eliminate sewer addition, because they know it's not going down our drain.
Right, right, okay.
You're still gonna pay two bills.
Yeah, right, you'd have two meters, two bills, two water bills, one sewer bill, correct? Now, and would the, uh, would the secondary water meter also be receiving the water tower maintenance fees?
No. It shouldn't, it should just.
Wouldn't it just be added to the one bill?
It should just be for the water being put into that meter.
Yeah, but that water still goes through the tower.
Uh, well, I guess I don't know if that.
I would think that just the sewer would be the portion that came off of that.
That, that's what I would think too.
I'm thinking it's, here.
Sorry, I hope you didn't wanna water your lawn. I'm not watering mine, that means I have to mow it.
I mean, you can just read this anyway, that, this is gonna be in charge of five dollars, so you guys can put in this right now, that that will include another, uh, water tower fee.
I think, and I.
The sewer maintenance, it wouldn't.
I agree with what, yeah, and I agree with what Nathan said, everything, everything should be the same as the other bill, except for anything that applies to the sewer side. Anything from the sewer side should be omitted, but that, that of the bill should, cause they're, they're using our water lines just like anything else.
They would get charged the water tower fee, but not the sewer maintenance fee.
So ideally, if you wanted to fill a pool, you go down to the bulk water station and don't pay that.
Or you can donate to the fire department and they'll come up there and fill it up for you.
Think it, I like that even better.
Well, I, I think that's a grand service. Serves two purposes, helps the fire department, helps the community.
The hundred dollars is just enough, that's not for the installation and the plumber and any of that stuff, that's just. So, again, we're still up to around, what, three hundred, four hundred bucks to get one in, with the hundred dollar fee.
Yeah.
Which would definitely pay for itself, if you gotta pool or.
Or if you water your yard.
If you water your yard a lot.
Yeah.
Yep. So I make a motion to approve the ordinance, zero eight, zero two, two thousand sixteen.
Second? Oh, favor?
Wait, who's second?
I did.
Should we do the roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Wester?
Hi.
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 Hi. Hi.
And it is now in effect.
So then we need a motion to, uh, win the second and third ruling.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Wester?
Hi.
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 Right.
Hi.
And it is now in effect.
And this street lights out.
Yeah, it is, there's another one I saw somewhere, I can't remember where it is though.
If they're, if they, if lights go out by your house, they'll put those new LEDs in, and they're horribly bright.
So this is, um, it's frustrating.
Though they seem to be a little more directional, like down, instead of out.
Where's the other one at?
I don't know, I'm not so sure, it's not that one down there in front of the, uh, phone building, but I don't remember. Have to wait till the lights come on.
Well, if you find out, it, it's really good to do them both at the same time.
I'll let you know.
So we're.
Don't fix that till September though.
On the dance card for.
Don't fix our water fights.
September fifth, correct, right?
Yes, well, and, does that work there?